On the Airport Solar.
All right. If you don't mind, if you could do a little update on Garrett Solar as well.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to just keep it to five minutes or less?
Lori, and how about non-disturbance agreements?
Oh, non-disturbance agreements, yes, thank you.
We have the addition of the non-disturbance agreements.
Okay.
While Lori is here, and Darwin, so let's do the update.
Okay, great.
Airport Solar, Garrett, non-disturbance, and then I need to get Mr. Paul.
Yeah, um, so I just want to say how much we appreciate working in Lake County. We have been working on solar projects in Lake County since 2009. And I think we've done the first project that we're ever done in Oregon, in Lake County. And you guys have been great partners all the way, and have always told us when we're about to slide off the rails, and how we can do better here, so we appreciate all the feedback and all of the willingness to work with us. Airport Solar, um, just to fill Mr. Robertson in, we've of course been working on Airport Solar for many years with Brad. That came together in 2014, and we've been steadily developing that ever since. It's finally under construction this year. It's on excess land at the airport, 215 acres. Took us a while to whittle down to see which were the best 315 acres that would stay out of the way of your current operations there. Uh, we are under construction. We have about 75% of the piles. We installed racking on top of steel piles. Those are, about 75% of those are in, they're started on the racking. They're just getting started on the modules. We've done a little bit of the underground, as you might remember. We have the two projects located near each other. There's Airport Solar, and just southwest of it is Garrett Solar.
Which is a private development.
Yeah, that's a private development. We actually had originally applied with the utility as a backup project, in case we couldn't do the bigger concept. That was to be the backup project on the airport if the utility wouldn't go for the bigger project. And then we realized we could do both, and so we are co-developing and building them at the same time, getting some economies there. And they are sharing a power line corridor. So we definitely, that's the hardest part of building a project, is locating a power line corridor. You have to touch a lot of landowners, and a lot of land use issues, and so that's the hardest part. It's a big benefit to be able to share the power line corridor for those two projects. So overview, the two projects will both connect to Pacificor. They're both over in Surprise Valley Territories, so we have to bring the wires over to Pacificor, closer to town by our other solar projects. The big substation that Pacificor is building is pretty much built now, so the wires will dead-end there, and that's where it's kind of joined Pacificor. And that power will actually be shipped to Portland General Electric. Both projects are selling their power to Portland General Electric.
So, one thing that we really like about this is the amount of jobs, short-term jobs, and everything, we got a rough number of the number of employees.
I thought you might want to know that. They are up to, they started ramping up about a month and a half ago, so we start with civil work, so Dog Lake was out there, you know, clearing the ground, and getting us ready to build the internal roads and so forth. So, you know, we start with about 20 people, and then we ramped up to about 90 people a few weeks ago, and this morning the report from the site is they have 130 people, 135 people working on both sites.
Wow.
Mainly, they're focused on Airport Solar right now. There's a lot of pressure to get both projects done by the end of the year, but Airport Solar is really, um, there's a, a...
There's definitely huge reason to have airports who are done by December 31st.
Yes, as far as the county is concerned, we were discussing, Brad and I were discussing that last week. It is our sincerest hope that they're built by the end of the year for many, many reasons, but the tax benefit to the county comes much sooner if we are completed by December 31st. So, 135 people on both sites, about 35 are doing the electrical work. They've got about 75 laborers. There's just a lot of, you know, labor managing the pile install, and then the racking is all laborers. I asked for an estimate of how many people they thought were somewhat local, and he said, "Well, define what you mean by local." So his guess was maybe about 60% of Lake County. I assume he means whoever they call out of Clemeth County too, and, you know, just a greater area, because, yeah, it's a big job and it needs a lot of bodies. So, it's going really, really well. We've had a lot of cooperation on all fronts, and we've worked with Swinerton on, I think, all except for one job that we've done in Lake County. And we think they've been a great partner, and we've heard nothing but good things about how they've taken the community, so I hope that continues to be true. And, let's see, anything else you would like to know about the projects? We're gonna, I'm offering up a tour at 2:00 today, Brad's taking me up on it.
Yeah, I believe Mark's gonna make it also, depending on, our meeting's running a little longer than we anticipated. We have an executive session later today, so...
Okay.
Two or shortly after.
Text me, I'm sure it's fine anyway.
Mark and I will meet you out at the site. That way you're not hanging around here waiting on us.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, um, and any other county employees that'd like to go, if it's acceptable, I would imagine.
Oh, yeah, I'll actually, if it's okay with you guys, I'll walk around and ask if you guys want to come.
Absolutely, 2:00, you know, our assessor might be interested, I don't know, maybe our finding director, I don't know. Just, uh, if it's built, with the taxation on it, for the county-wide, it's about $330,000 a year. The general fund side of...
That's just for the airport project.
That's just the airport project, and so for...
Another $70,000 for Garrett.
Yeah, and so the general fund side of that 330 is about 130,000 plus or minus. So the importance to have it built before December 31st up in operation is very important, because right now there's a comment period open on, through the Department of State Lands, so anybody can put a comment in on that. It's on the wetland side of it, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
I submitted a comment, but if anybody, locals, county-wide, or anything, also could submit a comment.
That would be fantastic, yeah. To summarize what the issue is, we've built many projects in Lake County, we've never worried about wetlands or waters, quote-unquote waters, it's a thing that they're calling flyas. On this project, the power line corridor does cross what's considered for certain a jurisdictional wetland, so we went through the permitting process for the power line corridor. It crosses two irrigated fields, and I don't really understand the list of what calling irrigated fields wetlands, but that's how it is. So we did the permitting process with that for Army Corps and Department of State Lands. We did not worry about the airport, it's hydrologically isolated, as they say, there's a ditch around it, it's been drained since the airport was built. But the Department of State Lands looked at aerial shots, and they saw these white splashes, where things puddle up and then the minerals dry, and...
We call them alkali flats.
Alkali flats. Well, they consider, they potentially consider that jurisdictional. So it's not like we found anything special or rare out there, but the fact that it puddles up out there in the spring is something that Department of State Lands wants us to document, and then their process is very slow. So, in an abundance of caution, we are staying out of those areas that are now dry sand to make sure that we are fully permitted before we touch anything that Department of State Lands could consider jurisdictional. And so I was very appreciative that you could submit a comment, asking for a little quicker consideration from the Department of State Lands. That's really gonna help us meet the end-of-year goal. And, you know, how good it gets around here, there's a lot of guys who would really like to do the work now and not later.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So, Darwin brought up the non-disturbance agreement.
Yeah, this is on our agenda, so we'll go ahead and have that discussion. The decision will be tomorrow, but we can have that discussion.
Yeah, so this is a non-disturbance agreement with the county. We've sought non-disturbance agreements several times where the county holds mineral rights. As you might remember, a few years ago, we thought that investors would like us to just fully clear the mineral rights, so we went through an exhaustive process, and we hired a geologist, and did a bunch of work to get it confirmed that there are no likely mineral rights, and we extinguished mineral rights, and it was costly and took a lot of time. And so, we've since found that title companies and investors are okay with non-disturbance agreements that pretty much conform with the length of the, that this solar project will exist. So for the Garrett project, the county holds some mineral rights on the actual private property where the arrays will be. The county holds some mineral rights where the substation will be, up here, just southwest of town. We already have a non-disturbance agreement in place for the other, for the Airport Solar project, which also has a substation there. And then I believe there's one section of a, where we have just a little easement, a 300 by 300 foot easement across private property. So the non-disturbance agreement covers three properties and about five different mineral instruments from the 30s and the 40s.
Okay, so we've added that as addition. Legal counsel's already looked at the agreements, similar to, that are exactly the same other than the areas. The only thing I would like before tomorrow is for you and Darwin to make sure that all the township ranges are accurate.
Yes.
Make sure everything's accurate for the properties, because I am not going through a map, though.
Yes.
The finding director and you, Lori.
The devil is in those details, for sure.
Yes, that's very important for that to be accurate, for, you say there's three different ones?
Yeah, there are three different parcels that are impacted by some mineral instruments.
You and Darwin make sure that that is accurate, get that paperwork for us to act on tomorrow.
Yeah, wonderful, you can do that.
And they're gonna be three separate agreements, correct?
No, it's all written into one agreement.
Is it?
Is that, is that gonna...
Well, there's ownership, three different ownerships of the property, is it one project?
It's, it's all for the Garrett Solar project, there is, the project owns one of the properties, the neighbor owns one of the properties, and then Garrett Solar...
So that's a legal question that Darwin will run by our legal counsel, and you guys, we may have three, or we may just have one.
Well, ultimately, the agreement that Jim Bailey's already looked at and signed off on, does show all three descriptions of three different parcels not connecting, but it does connect the whole project, but like you said, there's, you know, private ownership on the, you know, surface down, but this is the mineral rights underneath, so it's all, I find, we wrapped it in one.
If you have the form and have what it needs to be, it's a good question, just long as if we don't want to have to come back to it again, learn from past times.
We try not to come back, but darn if those investors don't just think of everything.
Yes, yeah, well, I guess, Lori, that's sort of where I'm going, if you're, the investors would rather see it as three individual.
We have had the investor's side legal real estate lawyer, as well as title review it already, so they've already signed off on our side.
Okay.
And so this time, there is not a third-party investor coming in, it's just gonna be one entity, so hopefully we won't have these, you know, things that are okay, to then, they're not okay later on, that we have with the airport solar projects.
Okay.
I'm just crossing my fingers, though.
Darwin, you'll get that paperwork, official paperwork, it might be in this other package here, I don't...
Yeah, maybe, I'll double check.
That's for sure, but, let's double check. Any other questions, Lori?
Great, yeah, and if any questions come up, we can talk about it today at 2:00.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right, we'll see you out at the site.
All right, Paul, let's get you in and out of here, not for a decision today, but he, Paul has, Melanie, our league manager, isn't here, but go ahead, Paul, this is on purchase of...
So we, the vehicle committee met a few different times, and it was decided that two vehicles will be purchased this year, one for the juvenile probation department, and one for the sheriff's office at a law enforcement capacity. I submitted RFPs on July 16th to four separate vendors requesting bids on Ford law enforcement vehicles and Chevy law enforcement vehicles. The reason we did not request Dodge vehicles is we do not have a service agent within 100 miles of here, and that's problematic, so we received, we only received three quotes back, one on, one Chevy, and two on the Fords, two separate vendors, and the selection was made to go with Hall Motors. They are a local vendor, and they were also the cheapest price coming in on quotes.
And I had never read them, Paul, what type of...
The quotes are on police package vehicles, so I believe Chevy calls them SSVs, which are special service vehicles, so they come with a large brake package, a transmission cooler, all size...
So is the lowest quote, is Chevy or Ford?
The lowest quote is a Ford, but there's only $300 difference between the Chevy and the Ford.
$478.
Is that what I wrote down? I didn't have it in front of me to say.
But the Chevy, from what I heard, is a better vehicle?
Yes.
So you recommended the Chevy?
I believe our request would be to purchase the Chevy vehicle.
And is it the lowest quote also? If not, we have to...
That's the one that's $478 more.
Than the Ford?
Than the Ford, yes.
But it's lower out of people's age of Ford?
Yes.
Okay, copy, go ahead and... So you recommend going with the Chevy tomorrow, whenever we make our decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good to make that happen.
And I, I don't know if you guys want to know more about the vehicle specifics, but...
I mean, it's such a link here, so, for the sake of time, I think I just, you got some to do.
Are you both for the sheriff's office, or is one for juvenile?
They're just one, sir.
No, no, I'm just, I just was saying that there was two vehicles approved, I'm only presenting for the sheriff's office. I don't know about the juvenile vehicle.
And I would like to compliment, get this done, the first part of the year, get it ordered, get it done, get us in the right cycle. That's what we could push and board, Paul, and thank you, Lori, for working with Melanie and getting this to us, because we know the process seems to get slowed down every year.
Exactly.
Just gets it, gets it on the table, gets going, so thank you. Yep, we'll act on it tomorrow?
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Paul, I don't know if you want to stay, I'm going to, everybody's in a hurry, but Daniel has EMS boundaries, I don't know if that's something you wanted to be...
Yeah, I'll stick around for that.
So, I'm sorry, everybody, we're just running way behind, but I gotta get Daniel in and out of here, also, and Paul. So, Daniel, EMS boundaries, you are the one that Paul usually does it, but he's not available right now, so...
So I'm talking about the big picture, the 2,000-foot, so EMS boundaries, technically called ambulance service areas, you know, the county's responsible making sure transporting ambulance is responding to every corner of the county, so... There's a few of us actually working on our EMS boundaries, district disaster, it's worked on theirs, theirs way out of whack, but Northlake EMS and Silverlake Fire and Rescue have worked on their, now that they revised some of it. The lines used to follow township range section lines, they're kind of hard to figure out out in the field, so we've kind of cleaned that up, sat down with both districts, both boards, and they drew a line along the roads, and they've kind of readjusted their boundary a little bit, I think that's the big thing we want to discuss right now, and the one that you're gonna do.
So, we as a board of commissioners have to accept these boundaries, so where they are changed a little bit, does that trigger anything that we need to be aware of?
The only thing that triggered was one person went from, and I don't know whose district they were in originally, and they went to a different district, so one went from either Chris's Northlake to Silverlake, or Silverlake to Northlake, it just affected one person, and it sounded like they weren't, they were happy with both sides, so...
And so the EMS volunteer groups and things are good with these boundaries, expanded for all, but...
So this was, Northlake actually spearheaded the whole, the whole project, and then that was Silverlake, and literally had eyes there at that planning session, they drew the line, and they put on a map.
So tomorrow, what we would need to act on is EMS boundaries as presented by the map, and accept that into record?
Yeah, and I would call them, refer them as the ambulance service area agreements, ASAs.
ASA.
That's how they're referred to in statute.
Ambulance service area agreement? And, but once we accept those into record, who do we notify? Now we're probably house all of that.
So that, the Department of Health and Food passed a whole record, and I can give that to the ones I have, so, real quick context, and just know we're also working on, so that takes care of two of our ASAs, they don't want to rap hazy on Lakeview, and I know Lakeview, when you pull up our map for the disaster, you have three different maps showing ambulance service area, and none of them are the same, so there's some homework to do there.
So, just one question, Daniel. So, just because we have this ambulance service agreement, does it mean if one ambulance is already on the call, they can't respond to it, or are they...
No, no, that has nothing to do with that, and all of our ambulance are working well together, I think we all have mutual aid agreements together, it's really the closest ambulance to get them to a credit problem, and let's get them help, so, but the ambulance service area, the whole person is make sure there isn't ambulance from somewhere responding, so, they are all going along.
All right, thank you very much. And you'll get that other information to us today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna go back to the, actually, the agenda, JBA, Multoma County, Lake County.
Okay, the Multoma County agreement.
There was updates embedded to... On the bottom, the only thing is, if you look at page 14 on yours... Look at page 14 on yours. Under section 5, there's a lot of verbiage, that was confusing to a lot of counties who are technically challenged, such as myself, so they shortened it up and sent a note indicating language clarifies one of the counties responsible for hosting the dashboards, there's no additional hosting need for your county. That's what they were trying to get crossed in that long-winded, long-winded, so they went back and modified it, because a lot of counties around the question of that. So what this does is, it, our portion, if you look at page 14 under section 6, payment, our portion's 27138 a fiscal year, and that's a, that's a small portion of the 60,000 that's recommended for halftime IT personnel in Multoma County, that's gonna give us real-time data, they call them dashboards, so it's real-time data on whether our SCON rates are, all the things that we're measured on for our IGA, our state intergovernmental agreement, that we give our money, everything that we're measured on, we're getting real-time data. Currently, our data is as recent as, I just have the last 30 days, 30, a month ago's data, nothing recent, and then it could be anywhere from 30 days old to 180 days old, nothing's current. Multoma County has a way of downloading and feeding this data, so statewide, all community corrections agencies are involved with this. It's a statewide movement, like I said, the total's $60,410 per year, our portion is $271.58 a year. There are counties paying more, smaller counties are paying less, so, but we all, we aren't gonna get the same data.
All right, reasonable, back on to tomorrow. Your next item is IGA, Oregon Department of Corrections in Lake County.
Yes, this is the measure 57, measure 57 IGA, through us and the Department of Corrections, our allocation's $50,000 for two-year, so 25,000 a fiscal year, and what we've done with that is I've found trace wants are from the wellness recovery centers, and we designed the budget, and that's what you have, which will probably be your second and third page and be, what we're portioned next two years, we'll just talk fiscal years, fiscal year, so for this next fiscal year, there'll be $5,000 used for materials and services, and that, when we talk trace indicated, would be for training, getting all staff up to speed with our moral recognition therapy program, which is MRT, provide the books and the materials, and keep that stuff updated, as well as some rewards for the participants making significant progress, and/or graduating from the program. And then the remaining $20,000 will be used for our RFP contracted professional services. And in 2017, we put out the RFP process, the MRT program was awarded to the hospital, Motor Recovery Center, Wellness Center, and at that time in the RFP, it was intended that it could be extended for up to four to six years, depending on the nature of the recovery center, wellness center, if that's still called. So we moved to extend that, because our partnership of operations has been outstanding, and continues to be outstanding. So the MRT program, all of our referred clients go through it, anybody that's referred from our office to the, to the Wellness Center Recovery Center, go through it, and everybody in our drug court, to prerequisite to graduate from drug court, is they entered and successfully complete the MRT program.
How, how long is that? How many hours do they actually get to drug court?
It's, it's a 12-week course, and they get, they're in their two to three hours a week, three hours a week, so I believe it's a 36, 24 to 36-hour course, and it's designed, it's designed that way, because there's homework associated with it, because there's a lot of thinking involved, because actually what it's trying to change is criminal conduct. So, it's one to two hours a week for 12 weeks, or two to three hours a week, I should say, for 12 weeks. And we get our money's worth, and it's, it's worth it to us, we, it helps create that, that change from criminal conduct to acceptable conduct.
So, I, I think this is all right, then, is there anything, Dr. Warner, that, that would, that you keep or sending to success, or anything, or is there any, any way to measure the value of this, I guess, of the turnaround of some people, or anything? Is there anything that triggers whenever you're, they sign up for this?
Well, I don't have anything formal, but I do know that it's been pretty successful.
Our recidivism rate is low and stays low, and we, there's always gonna be, this small community like ours, there's always gonna be 12 to 15 folks that we just cannot, cannot get our hands around, wrap our hands around, provide enough services for them that when they successfully complete, they're gonna come back. There's just that core folks, and we're trying to address those folks. Hopefully other folks, we've done a great job, so our recidivism rate is really about, and we'll see more of that as I bring some different grants forward, I, I'm coming out and talking about our recidivism rates, and wherever that things, I'm proud of our recidivism rate, so...
Well, this, in a way, falls right in line with that stepping-up program that I've pushed so hard for, and everything, getting crossover from agency to agency, and the recidivism into our jail, and our everything, so, I like it.
And we're out of capacity now, to where we're really starting to look at that seriously, that suggested that you may...
Yeah, there's plenty of proof out there that if we get ahead of it, instead of behind it, it makes a difference.
Proactive.
Yep.
Well, we've seen the, we've seen the proof with the people that went through the program, you know? I can't say enough about it, I just want the public to be able to grasp how good that is, and so...
And as we move forward, we'll be doing more outreach and education in the community.
Appreciate it very much, so we'll act on most of those tomorrow. Thank you for taking the time to be here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Warner.
Is there anything, any quick update or anything you need to give, or anything? Banjo hair, is that true?
Uh, well, sorry to take up your time, we have a state audit that's coming up on the 21st, it's the 21st and 22nd, and what we really are focusing on right now is our suicide prevention event that is happening at the recovery center. It's a partnership between recovery center, wellness center, and... It's a partnership between recovery center, wellness center, and the VA.
And that's August fourteenth.
And that's August fourteenth from ten to two. So if you can make it, that would be wonderful.
That'd be good. Yeah, our last year event was just incredible. The organization has, we all attended, every walk of life was there. So that, you're touching everybody that, so, yep. I'm, my schedule's pretty tight, but I've gotta make it over there for, before time. It's a very good event, so thank you.
Please do. Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Ronnie, you need to get out of here.
That's funny, I'm the last one of you guys.
We, we could move you. And you can stay for the rest of the meeting too, if you'd like, but we can move you here to do a little presentation. Dump these landfill fees.
Yes. Well, so over, in my time there, and I believe way before me, the dump had, the dump, the cost of the dump during fair has always been donated by Mitchell or Adair or whoever did it. This year, and Lakeview sanitation has always provided all of the garbage parties and the dumpsters and the hauling fees and everything free as a donation. This year, he's billing for everything and then after the fact, he'll do some kind of discount, whatever he deems, which is only fair. And, but I'm kind of asking, I have no clue what the dump fee's gonna be. And so I was kind of hoping just to plant a seed and ask if the, since it's a county landfill now, maybe if not donate the whole thing, because it's a new department, maybe do some kind of a discount or something. Seventy-five percent off, I don't know.
So.
Something that, I just kinda wanna have it out there because we're getting hit, you know, the garbage party part of it, not just the fair side is roughly about thirty-seven hundred that we weren't expecting. And so the dump fees on top of that, I just.
So you're only talking about the cost of the weight of garbage?
Yeah.
And, and so you have no past records because of all the donating that have all went into the landfill? So it's three and a half cents a pound, seventy dollars a ton, so.
And Kevin says that he usually empties, are they the forty-yard dumpsters, the really big ones? Maybe twice during fair.
Okay, and this is inclusive of Roundup and Fair or separately?
Well, I am asking for both. I'm asking for both entities. We're, we are this year, just to eliminate the double handling of trash. We are putting a dumpster on, I call it the rounded side, it'll be on that side of the fence. Because they have a guy that does their trash and instead of putting it in the trailer and then we have to, my side comes and gets it and then takes it and puts it into our dump. It's kinda stupid. He can just take it directly to the dumpster and it will stop, but it alleviates a lot of time. And Kevin's gonna keep that all separate.
So Commissioner, I'm on disposal, I'm also on the fair board, but we have no idea what the tiny just gonna be, so I think this is something that probably should come back. I don't think we should waive fees for that department to the departments that are upcoming department. But something just for discussion that we could consider is, is for general fund to pay a portion of those fees or whatever. But we can't blindly today sit here and say we will cover all of it or whatever, so.
I'm just planting a seed.
But it goes by the way, so make sure everybody dumps out their soda cans before they put them in there. And don't put them on spirits. But I'm willing for you to come back and let us know and have possibly a request for part of the.
Oh, you mean after the fact, after fair?
Yeah, because we have no idea what the tiny just gonna be.
Yeah, I just don't wanna blindly say we'll pay for it and then it's ten thousand dollars and.
So they can bill us during fair, right? Kind of how they do it now when we, when the fairgrounds take something out to the dump?
Yeah.
They send, they give us this little receipt bill, so they can keep traffic during fair.
So whenever Kevin is wanting to do a Lakeview sanitation.
Yeah.
So you should go talk with Gil Boland, our manager out there, and say that the landfill, whenever you have the garbage from the fair, please keep it separate and bill the fairgrounds for that.
Okay.
And then you'll be able to bring that, a recommendation to us.
And I'll have them separate, I'll have them separate from the fair and the rounded. Because those dumpsters should then be separated. I think it's good to have a, to start keeping traffic separate costs, so that they know for their budget also.
Yeah, as, as things change, it's just, we'll, I'll speak for myself, it'll probably be fair to both fair boards and Roundup and.
Well, yeah, I would expect.
Helping out.
Yeah.
If we help out at all.
If.
Yeah. I know.
We'll do what we can for sure.
Well, I'm just here to plant a seed.
So.
And you know, can I say something totally off topic?
Yes.
Can I? So the alert, I'm glad I was kinda here for that, that was pretty darn interesting. But one of the first things that came to my mind was, wow, the possibility of using it during fair when, you know, because parking is atrocious and they park very deep and then start going this way. And, you know, was it two years ago, we had that little sweet eighty-two-year-old lady in ninety-six degree weather stuck in, in the middle of all that? That could be a use for that. Meaning everybody's gonna say, move again, darn car.
I think there's many uses.
Yeah, but that was pretty interesting.
Yep, it's very interesting, so, yeah. So, little bit of an update, I know Mark's been, we have a few different thoughts, but anyways, update. We are way behind, I wanna get a little update. We have, we have a new employee, we have a pastor who waited up left for over a month.
So, yeah, so the end, or mid-May, James came back from vacation and was going to give me roughly a week's work worth of work and then be here that following work so that, that week, to clean this place and to all, all that kinda stuff. Anyway, that never happened. He loaded up and then left early in the morning, so we had none of those exits and things. Took all the keys. It was, that's just James scattered, that just kinda happens. But, so we've had a real struggle with all the keys and everything, those are getting taken care of. We hired Nick, June twenty-fourth was his first day, Nick Wilkins. I think he's gonna end up to be really good once he gets familiar and once, he doesn't have this kinda background at all. But he's really stepping up.
He's learning fast.
Yeah, he really is. But we are behind the water truck. We had to have the road department come out and work on, it wasn't working. Both of our tractors are in major need of repair. The dump truck, as you know, went out to the landfill that we should get back at some point.
Not the dump truck?
No, the dump truck.
The nine-twenty loader?
Yeah, the loader went out to the landfill.
It was supposed, this weekend, possibly, probably Monday, it, Cap, Peterson Cap ran behind him in the back.
So hopefully we'll get that back. So between lack of staff, lack of equipment, lack of everything, we are just way behind. We are way behind. We do have, some of the four-H crews are stepping up and they're, one of them wants to paint the whole front, the front white fence, so that will make some things look better. I just talked to Dan at ACE yesterday and they're going to take, take care of fixing up the driveway entrance. Our Stevens Drive, for lack of a better word, because she kinda put all that in. So they came out yesterday and assessed all that and they're wanting to take care of sprucing that up really nicely, so that's nice. I did just hire last, no, the thirty-first, hired Davis Collins, pretty much just for weed eating and mowing. And that's pretty much what he's been doing the whole time. The mower just bit the dust, the three-sixty. So we're back to a little Husky Barnet, Buddy's going to mow it, community service crew is going to mow it this week for us.
Bit of an update, last night, Jeremy and I started the lawn mower.
The three-sixty?
Yes.
What happened? How?
Um, the right planetary isn't working, but I don't know if the bypass, the steering on the right.
Oh.
I don't know if there's a bypass or a lack of oil in it. So the motor couldn't be damaged enough over a minute for twenty, thirty minutes.
Really?
So, but it won't, it'll only go left. And we usually go right.
Oh, that's bizarre.
So I'm gonna take a look at that, hopefully tonight, if I get a power here. But anyways.
That would be great.
It may, it may, it may run for half a day or maybe.
Well, anything's better than nothing. We did have a.
And the tractor, yeah.
Baker, Craig, Greg, Greg. Baker come out and looked at, serviced it a couple of weeks ago because it wasn't starting. And we had one of the events, since June twenty-fourth, we've had an event at the, in building one every weekend. And the, one of the events, the kids were just, it was, they were all afraid. It was just, and I went back and I looked at the DVRs for the cameras and they're going, no, no, it wasn't our kids, it wasn't our kids. And I'm seeing all the adults standing out there watching them. They lost their jobs. You know, it's kinda how it goes. But, but they did have their crew come out and fix it. And it worked once after that. But Greg came out after that and we did new air filters, new water filters, and I've generally checked on top of it all, but.
Well, Jeremy and I are working on it.
Okay.
The tractor also got parts ordered for the tractor. I didn't make it run last night by cross wiring and different things.
Okay, cool.
So, we're gonna go, we're gonna get it fixed.
So we are behind. We are way behind, but I mean, we'll pull it off, we can get it, we can get it done right there.
So your paint for your fence?
I have tiniants for the front two sides, for sure. And I'm sure there'll be some leftover.
Not, not down by the state force?
Yeah, they didn't agree to do the state force, that part of it. But the first two, the four-H parking lot and the main lawn parking lot.
And that's not down by the grass either, that's just the highway front?
That's just the highway front, yeah.
And?
Yeah.
How much is the paint for five ounces?
Um, well, diamond, the five ounce, I use the Metro, the recycled stuff because it turns out to be, I think it's like fifty-six dollars for five ounces, which is real reasonable for a fence. So. And I think that's kinda, Roundup stepped up and I didn't know that James always did all of the brush beating back out in the, I call it the back forty, this north side of the arena and everything, which was some of the exit stuff we weren't gonna do. And so they came, they had work day on the fourth, and I noticed there's a lot of that done now. So they brought it and through the text messages, I'm on the Roundup text messaging thing, and I know a lot of them brought brush stuff and weed eaters and, so, and it does look a lot better.
Yeah, I was out there last night. They've got the pro rodeo camp canary pretty much done, brush beating, but there's a whole bunch of other that that needs to be done.
Yeah, and we did the two fields done and the four-H field done. So I'll be out there brush beating. I can do that, that's easy.
It's hard for you to be taken out of office at a time of fair.
I'm kinda way behind on paperwork, so.
If there's other alternatives, other things that we can come up with, it'd be better to keep you on task on that other.
Yeah, yeah.
I know.
So it's, you know, it's just busy.
But you're an exempt employee, you can work.
I know, really, you can work me to death. But, it will.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for updating me. Next, we have a possible rabner contract proposal. This is Wellness Committee, I guess, that's been presented by Ann, I guess. Do you know any?
I think it's Ann.
Any particulars that you need to know? I'll run and see if I can catch her real fast, the time is running. Alright, so a possible contract proposal and this comes through, actually Wellness Committee?
Wellness Committee, mm-hmm. So David Rabner traveled to Lakeview several years ago and spoke to the whole county. The Wellness Committee thought it was a good opportunity to have him come back. He's kinda doing a tour around this area. So the date right now, I think it's October twenty-second. And we're looking at from like nine to noon in the morning. And his topic is going to be.
October twelfth. Or fifteenth.
October fifteenth, okay. I think the October twenty-second was the initial date and then we figured out that was hunting season, so moving it up. So that's a Tuesday, October fifteenth. The topic's going to be along the lines of personal wellness and attitudes about leadership so that we're all accountable, all accountable for the organization culture. And then because mental wellbeing is such a big topic right now, it'll talk about like the stress and the things we can do with those attitudes and things like that to help our organization. City County Insurance Services does have a grant that we're applying for. We're also looking at inviting other organizations and they, right now, are on board with helping share some of that cost. So again, just another great opportunity for all of our staff to have a little bit of a boost. It's things sometimes we know and understand, but when we hear it again, it just kinda helps.
Do you know how much the City County grant is?
Boy, is that Jay. You know, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I think it's, I'm not even gonna say, I'm not gonna shoot from my hip here.
So the, the cost is forty-five hundred dollars, but you're looking at trying to find some partners? I would think that the mental health department might, through the possibility, might be a possibility, I don't know.
Possible to town, like he was kinda verbally provided some money and then against the county. So those are the two that we're looking at.
So if we were to agree to this and enter into this contract, you, the Wellness Committee, would work it, try to offset some of that cost through grant, through other invitations and that?
Yes.
I just can't agree to it because I won't be gone health company, I won't be able to go.
Are you gonna be gone on the fifteenth?
My, my season runs early. I do tags this year. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. So we'll, we can act on this tomorrow. But that would be my main question, Ann, is, is, it's, it's quite an expense for the county to just take on that alone, but if we can get the grant, partnership, or you work on, you and the Wellness Committee work on whatever you can to try to get the partners here. And the other thing is, is whenever you're able to get a speaker like this into Lakeview, I would, we need to operate for whoever we can get.
Right. Well, that's, that's the thing too, that, yeah, it is, it is expensive, but when you think about sending everybody in the county away to hear somebody like this, it's, I don't, I don't even wanna guess what the cost would be. You know, we expect to have about fifty of our employees attend. And then again, Town of Lakeview, Mental Health, Public Health.
Right.
Other, the E S D, other, other partners, other agencies, you know, if we can get a hundred people here, you know?
That would, that would be great. Have to have a good sound system, I think we can make that happen.
When he was here before, we used the, Josh helped set up the speech system down in Memorial Hall, so he was very satisfied with that.
So it's a, it's a nine to twelve program, nine in the morning, twelve at noon.
So we'll be asking for your support in allowing department heads to determine whether their offices are. So, we'll be asking for your, uh, support in allowing department heads to determine whether their offices are closed or not.
Yeah.
Up to their discretion. That's kind of what we've done in the past with some public, you know, notification reporting.
Yeah, and you know, I, I think that's great. And, and we've done a couple of other ones in, in some departments that, that everybody's in there. They just signed up and some people just had to step out for a short time, so it's doable on that part of it. So, my only thing is, is to try to find the partners financially would be great.
Right. Okay, tomorrow I'll give you an update on that because Jade, I mean, I know Jade has that number.
Okay, so, very good. So, we'll, you got questions?
I was just going to say, I started that Leadership Academy through the NACO, and this will be perfect to tie in with, uh, for me personally.
Well, we'll take right out of your, your line item. There's, there's your partner, Ann.
So, and I got a grant for that, so.
Good.
A two hundred dollar grant. This will be very good.
Yeah, I, again, like, and it's not something we can afford to do every year, but it seems like we're on a three-year cycle for this. And it does seem to be dollars well spent for the benefit that it provides. You know, we're all talking about training and leadership skills and, and then again, like we said, attitudes and mental health and all of those things are such an important player in how we operate as an organization.
We all need an attitude adjustment, so, from time to time.
I'm glad he wasn't looking at me when he said that.
I love that.
I'll record this. On wellness, your, your mental stake or all that is very important.
Right, I mean, there's, and I'm thinking, again, it's things we know, but until you really sit down and think about it or talk about it with somebody, you don't really put it all in place. But they are finding out now that there are more mental health reasons for people not attending work than, because it turns into a physical element. You know, it starts off with that, that mental issue, whether it's stress or, or just emotional, you know, spiritual, all of those things. And then our body starts manifesting it physically and we're, then we're sick. And so, I think from a whole being perspective, it's nice to start talking about, you know, what we're telling ourselves and what we're saying in our minds.
All right. So, if Jade tomorrow would like to do a little bit of, no, he'll be gone tomorrow.
I might run, if you wanted to, I might go run and ask him right now.
Yeah, we'll go on to our agenda and if he wants to come in to speak back towards us, it would all be great.
Okay, thank you.
Next, uh, we have the server firewall project. Melanie would like for us to act on that tomorrow. She has a full page. You've probably read it and everything. I am not going to speak to any more to it other than we need to get it done tomorrow. If you have questions, please email or text her, even though she's on vacation, but.
I talked to her some before she left about it.
Yeah, this is all, what we need to get done. Next item is the dump. He's already gone over that. Pacway is on prison advisory committee liaison. It'd be formally, um, put that into your position. Next, and matter of fact, if you want, Mark, we can act on that. Let's get it offered there today. So, um, by consensus, you, you'll become the liaison for the prison advisory committee. And it's an ex officio, non-voting position, um, voting, if I said that correct. And so, by consensus, you're the liaison for that. And thank you for stepping up and doing that. In a way, it's sort of bittersweet. I've been on it for nineteen years. I think you'll probably see me still attend occasionally. It's an ex officio position, not my liaison, but just my interest.
And we need to get Steve, my, I guess he's already got mine.
He, he should have Stephanie, who's one that usually sends that out, so, um, we'll need to have Melanie get that contact information out there. So, we'll take that off of the list for tomorrow, get that done. And I'm going to get one other thing done really fast that I want to get done today. That Pacway liaison is off for tomorrow. The parking lot project, if it's okay with you, Commissioner Albertson, I know you're very much aware of what is the potential to go on out there. I'd like to, just because time's of the essence, get a consensus to go forward with the parking lot project. Melanie's done an excellent job working with me. Um, we've already removed the tree over there. The neighbor had mentioned. Kudos to the work service, our community service people and Buddy. But I'd like to get this thing treated possibly. The goal would be, the reason why it's time sensitive is get that treated up before the parade time and everything, so if, yeah, by consensus, you would agree to go ahead. And there are several different budgets this will hit, but it would come out of the video lottery dollars, the I T side, and, uh, there's one or two other ones, but.
And not only the looks of the, the need for us to park their vehicles over there so we can start parking in the parking lots so people, the public can get in and park when they do business at the courthouse. So, the, the only concern I have about the parking lot, the panels, the fake barbed wire panels look really good, and that goes with our picture and heritage type thing. My concern is, is that, I guess those things aren't sharp.
No, they are not.
They're just rounded off.
They're rounded.
I'm just worried about, you know, what our liability is for somebody parking themselves on it.
There should be no liability. They're designed for, um, public areas and stuff like that. They have the look of big barbed wire, is what the look is, but they, um, when I talked to the, uh, building official, he didn't see a problem on that. But you, you touched on one thing I definitely wanted to mention is managing our fleet and our parking area and getting assigned parking over there so that we can open up this parking lot here for public and employees. We have had, I know you probably have two, like from the public and through the businesses that, from county vehicles to employees' vehicles being parked. So, this would get our, our fleet vehicles over there, designated parking for those. Public still have quite a bit, a couple designated spots for museum, people that come in from the museum, and open up this parking lot here, just keep a couple maintenance, the everyday use rigs. And then the public, our employees could park in this one and open up the street parking lot at one. There will be some minor possible anxiety, I guess, um, but a whole system set up for surveillance with a camera. It'll be very good. So, I ask for consensus to go ahead with this project. By consensus, we're moving forward with that project and consensus prior to that was approved for days unchanged. With that, we're coming back to the David Ravner, Raveneer?
Ravner.
Ravner. So, well, I've done it tomorrow. We're both very supportive of it. Uh, the question was Jade, is a possible grant to help pay for it and other partners to reduce the county's cost for the forty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, what the, what the committee thought was we would invite people and not treat them as partners to help contribute. We haven't talked about any kind of financial support from other entities. But we have applied for a wellness grant, which will pay at least seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's likely to pay more than that, but they've committed to a minimum level of seventy fifty. But, uh, once they, once they process that, it could be as quite a bit more than that.
And so, I, I guess for me, I see such a value, it's very expensive, forty-five hundred dollars for three hours is a lot of money. So, what I see is a value for the town and public health, mental health hospital.
Yeah.
That they would possibly buy in, especially on the hospital and mental health, mental health side of it. To go the, the other way, it's only three hours, so people would only miss work for three hours. They'd still be getting paid with the three hour presentation. So, I guess where I was going is if you guys could work on a partnership to lower that cost to the county down a little bit.
Okay, we can, yeah, I'm sure we can. You know, I just want to say one thing that I don't know if has already been said, but, uh, the emphasis in wellness this year with health insurances, with health insurance companies, and what the data and research is showing is that one of the biggest indicators and precursors of poor health is a lack of connection and community at work. Meaning, are people happy at work? Are they, are they connecting with other people? It's all those skills, those social skills that are involved with how you get along with other people at work. They're finding that if, if people are not doing that well, their health is, is almost certainly going to be worse than those who are. And so, the emphasis in, the new emphasis in wellness is those kinds of things. It's, it's the company barbecue. It's the, those inspirational and, um.
Motivating.
Motivating and training and how do you do this and, you know, getting people to want to do this, you know. So, it's really interesting. It's not just moving and eating right, exercising, and it's, it, I guess the, the new emphasis is on your emotional and mental wellness also, because those things are going to lead the way and determine to a great degree what your physical health is going to be.
We used to call it writing your job.
Yeah, there's that. And satisfaction, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that, especially with the way society is pushing. Everybody's going all the time. So, um, yeah, and so, but, uh, when I go looking at the cost wise and everything in the market, I just like to see.
So, we have quite a few things planned for this year, um, for our wellness program. This will kind of kick it off, and, and it's all going to play off of this. But you just mentioned one part of it. It's, you know, the people are going all the time. Helping people learn how to deal with stress, um, how to better manage their time, recognize the need for, um, powering down, I don't know what you call that. What's the word? Decompressing and, you know, all those things. You're sleeping well, you know, all those things that we're not doing a good job of, we recognize. We've, we've had a lot of stress. We've worked too hard. We're not sleeping right. You know, it's not, it's not just eating and exercise.
Be careful, you're depressing me more because you're nailing me to a T and I'm not going to be able to attend this meeting.
But, you know, we're, we're, we'll be working on these things over the year. And hopefully, if people really care about how they feel and their health, you know. I would like to retire and be healthy and enjoy that time. That's my motivation. And I hope, you know, people start to feel that, um, hopefully get people on board.
So, does your Wellness Committee, do we, do they have a line item in the budget?
We do. It's about two thousand dollars, I think.
Is that what we're doing a year?
But, Ann, I, Ann got that increased this year for this particular reason, this specific reason. I can't remember what the amount is.
I'm, I'm just talking for future, whether you will start planning for more stuff like this.
Yeah, what in the future, so. We have another grant opportunity that we're, we're pursuing also that would help, um, provide incentives and motivational prizes, you know, for participation.
I know, you know, my wife works at the hospital and, you know, they have those things in place.
Yeah.
She's, she's taken home over five hundred bucks from white loss and different things, and so.
You know, people want to do these things. It's just, it's hard. So, if you have any kind of motivation, it, it, it might just push them over the top where they would participate. We've had low participation in most of our activities in the past, so we're, uh.
I, I, once again, you've heard me many times. I encourage you to take a look at Warner Creek Correctional Facility.
Yeah.
How they're, you know, I think they're up to forty to fifty percent participation, how there's the structures, how it's set up. Doesn't have to be just like theirs, but I think one, one area that we are struggling in is the participation, participation by just any employee.
Yeah.
Anybody that, the participation and the being part of the group, part of the meetings, all that. A lot of it's driven more from the management side of the world. And you got to get the participation by non-management employees at the table, ownership of how they, you know.
That's, that's the key. It is. It's the key with the safety program. It's the key with the wellness program. It's, it's got to be, you know, it can't be management down. It's got to be.
You got to get ownership from the employees. Anyways, um, well, I've done it tomorrow.
Okay.
My emphasis is, is to try to find the partners financially. If we don't find them financially, it's, those partners still need to be at the meeting at the end.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Where are we at on our agenda? Parking lot progress taking care of K C C, how to service, how to district contract. That was an error for us to sign that. Uh, it's been paid for. The contract wasn't signed. Uh, so this is actually act dated to two thousand, it's a contract for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. We need to, um, act on that and sign that to make sure that, um, K C C has that for the records and everything. It's, uh, it's basically housekeeping, uh, error made by not having that contract signed, even though we paid for it. So, that's on the agenda for tomorrow. Part of these hideout O L C seat permit, a lot of times these come in before meetings. So, that's the, anytime there's a new license application, we approve those as board. Melanie runs it by the sheriff, makes sure there isn't no outstanding, uh, issues. Uh, this one here, O L C's making them, uh, do a complete new application because they're changing their name of their establishment out there, so we can act on that tomorrow. Just takes motion and a second of signature. Next item is old railroad memorabilia. As you've seen out in the hall, the Historical Society wants to put that on loan to the county for display. Orville Layton, who has passed, was very instrumental in, um, saving the railroad, which is county ownership now. He was the mayor at the time, uh, postmaster too, I believe. Family members will be here. The Historical Society will be here. And we have a form to sign that it's on loan, um, with them, so. Basically, we'll give them an opportunity to speak and, uh, and, uh, do that. With that, um, we do have, um, did I miss anything, Commissioner? I got that? So, tomorrow we will add on the non-discuidence agreement. And in addition, um, we have executive session today at eleven forty-five under potential litigation one nine two six six zero two H. So, um, unless you, did you have any liaison updates or anything? Okay, so we will, um, recess until eleven forty-five and we'll come back. Open session and then the executive session at that time. So, we recess at eleven seventeen.